I'd like to call order the regular meeting of Peters Township Planning Commission. Ed Ropke.
Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mr. Magrino.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Sulepis.
Here.
And Mr. Carter Felix.
Here.
I do want to point out that we, council on Monday night, did appoint a new Planning Commission alternate, Rochelle Corbal. She'll be joining us next.
Very good. Next, approval of minutes. Any comments on the February 13th minutes? If none, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the February meeting.
Sorry, there's...
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Reports and correspondence?
None.
Site plan subdivisions filed for review?
Two. One subdivision, one site plan. There's a subdivision called Donaldson's Crossroads, Plan Number Three. They're carving off now parcel from, in the location where the former Burger King is. And the next plan for filing is the Chase Bank Site Plan at the former Burger King's site at Route 19, Donaldson's Crossroads. They're going to tear the Burger King down and build a new bank. They want a separate parcel ground.
Any comments on the agenda? Any audience comments for items that are not on the agenda? You're done. Seeing your old business, move on to new business. The Planning Commission Recommendation for the amended plan Hamlet of Springdale Phase Five, lots 509 and 510.
This is going to be a Planning Commission recommended, recommendation to council. Benjamin Marcus Holmes at LC is owner of lots 509 and 510 of Hamlet of Springdale Phase Five. They're requesting township approval to adjust the shared lot line between lots 509, which is 103 Nightbridge, and 510, which is 101 Nightbridge. Final plan adjusts the shared property line between the two parcels. This realignment carves off just over 1,600 square feet, .03 acres from Lot 509, and combines it with Lot 510. Both lots are part of the Hamlet of Springdale Phase Five plan that was initially recorded May 17, 2017. These lots are zoned low-density residential, which requires a minimum lot area of .5 acres. Under this proposed configuration, Lot 509 would be .63 acres in size, and Lot 510 would be .68 acres in size. They're surrounded by low-density residential on all sides. This application would simply adjust the shared lot line, maintaining two conforming lots. Planning staff is recommending that amended plan Hamlet of Springdale, Plan Number Five, provisions of Lot 509 and 510 be approved. You can see, it's just this triangle here. This is the current lot line, they're moving it over here. It's a triangle on the backside.
Seems pretty straightforward. Any comments? Any audience comments? Any of them motion?
I'd like to make a motion if the Planning Commission moves to recommend the Hamlet of Springdale, Plan Number Five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Bring us to Planning Commission Recommendation, Final Plan Stein Subdivision, Brim and Lane. I will be refusing myself from this discussion.
I will also be refusing myself from this discussion. Right. This is also a Planning Commission recommendation to council. Joshua and Melissa Stein are owners of Parcel One and Parcel Two on this plan. They're requesting township approval to consolidate those two parcels, and also do land swaps with both 127 Brim and Lane and 129 Brim and Lane, all of which in effort to gain access to Brim and Lane. This is Parcel One here. There is a Parcel Two, not shown in our GIS system, but it is down here. It was recorded as part of Cross Gates 10, 70s, we've just never drawn it in our GIS. This is 127 Brim and Lane here, 129 Brim and Lane here. They're proposing their access to Brim and Lane to be through this corridor right here that we'll get to in the next slide. I'll go over the consolidation first, and then get into the land swaps. Consolidation here, again, this is Parcel One up here and around the backside. Parcel Two here, again, is that triangle. Both parcels are owned by the Steins. They're simply proposing to consolidate those two lots as part of this plan. The first of the two land swaps at 127 Brim and Lane are equal amounts of land. This triangle here will be carved off of Parcel One and given to the Henry property here at 127 Brim and Lane, in exchange for this red piece of land here, which will roughly be half of the access width to Brim and Lane. Those are relatively equal portions of land, they're just trading between amongst themselves. The second land swap between these two blue pieces here, similar to the other land swap, this portion at the north will be carved off of Parcel One and be given to 129 Brim and Lane, in exchange for this blue strip of land here that will complete the rest of the access to Brim and Lane. This is roughly a 20-foot access to Brim and Lane. They need this access because access on the other side of the lot isn't really facilitated because they're going to have to travel under the trail, and then access at the end of Brim and Lane is just too steep to make it work. So this allows this lot to gain access to that right of way. Planning staff is recommending that the Cross Gates 11A subdivision slash consolidation plan, Stein subdivision, be approved with the following conditions. There is a condition in my report that we are awaiting Peters Township sanitary approval. We have obtained that, so I'm going to be striking that condition. But we are still waiting for the Washington County Planning Commission review, so that would give you the condition, council approval for the subdivision.
Any commissioner comments?
The cul-de-sac that's shown where the driveway will come into, will that ever be extended and continue on into the other?
No. With this consolidation, that kind of prohibits that extension.
And there's nowhere for it to go.
Right.
You can't get that...
Topographically, so it's a dead end.
It's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Permanent.
Any audience comments? That a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the Stein property Cross Gates, or actually, to recommendation Stein property Cross Gates Plan Number 11A subdivision consolidation plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Same? That brings us to Adam Skeet. Planning Commission approval for the Westbury preliminary plan, Barnett Street, Church Hill, and Venetia Roads.
Good. I'm going to run through real quick and hit some key points. The developer owner is here with her consultants, and I'll let them go into detail on their proposed plan. But just to familiarize everyone, almost 26 acres of land here, three or four properties involved. And this area of Peters is known as Hackett. It's in an area of the Zone Village Residential. Environmentally Sound Enterprises has the properties under agreement and are seeking township Planning Commission preliminary plan approval for this new residential development. As I said, it's Zone Village Residential. This was a zoning district that we first established back in 2005. Enhanced it a bit here in 2017, and Environmentally Sound Enterprises is utilizing that section of our zoning. I'm going to let the Planning Commission know, as well as the audience here tonight. Environmentally Sound has provided Peters Township's an existing condition survey, Phase One environmental site assessment, wetland delineation reports, extensive geotechnical reports. This is an area that is, has shallow mine cover, so it was a very sensitive area for us. And in addition to that geotechnical report, we received stormwater management reports as well. The property is 25.96 acres. Total lots being proposed at this time is 69 lots. That is, along with those 69 lots, they're setting aside 6.57 acres as open space. That hits our 25% goal that we're trying to achieve here, the open space. I won't get into the plan itself. I will point out that access is to Churchill Road, which is a state road. They require a PennDOT Highway occupancy permit for that. Plans have been submitted to PennDOT. There's adequate stormwater management. There's public access to public sanitary sewers. As I said, we have a lot of geotechnical information. Our experts are here tonight will enlighten Planning Commission and the audience on all the geotechnical aspects of this project. They are subject to traffic impact fees, so at the time of building permit, each time they come up for a building permit, there will be a traffic impact fee associated with that.
Can I just, maybe I'm missing, I don't see it on your conditions.
What's the traffic impact?
It's in the paragraph.
It's number...
It's in the paragraph.
Number seven. Condition seven.
Per lot TIF requirement.
Are you calling the checklist?
Ryan Holmes will be the builder in here, and they're talking about homes in the 300 to 390 territory, and I think they'll show you the types of homes that they're going to build here. Planning staff is recommending that Planning Commission approve the preliminary plan subject to those 22 conditions listed in my report. Before you make any decisions, we should let the applicant come through and explain what's going on.
Good evening. Ann Murphy. Thank you. We were here in September, and there were several residents in the audience that evening that expressed their concerns and questions with regard to the plan. And from that time till now, we've worked diligently to bring to the township a plan that answered, addressed nearly every concern that was brought forth to us, as well as the ordinances that the township has in place for their subdivision. If you put up the... So we came in originally, we had 90 lots, if you recall, and one of the concerns that were brought to our attention was the density of the plan. We reduced that down to 69 lots. There were a few areas that had changed with regards to the additional geotechnical work that was done. We've combined a couple of lots. And we've increased the open space, especially along Barnett. So from the corner of Westbury coming in to Barnett Drive on both sides, you'll see there's ample green space leading up to the cul-de-sac. And on the other side is green space, which would be the area for the tot lot and the mailboxes, the cluster mailbox units. We still maintain green space within the interior of the plan. And of course, in the areas along Talbun Drive, that has a grade to it. So the residents on Talbun Drive, once the plan is finished, will not be looking at the housing development. They'll be looking at a green space, at a grassed hillside. We acquired the lot across from the pond, and so the storm water will flow piped through that property and connect into Venetia Road. And then, of course, that would all be landscaped. That's where the existing home is right now, and that would be removed. And so, once the development is completed, the residents along Venetia, that about Talbun or along Talbun, really won't see this development at all. There will be just green hillside, and of course, that's a dry pond, it's a retention point, so... And it'll be, of course, all landscaped. There have been changes to the plan with regards to sidewalks and traffic calming, all of the things you, you know, need for a pedestrian community, and that's what this is geared towards, is a pedestrian community for young families. We had additional geotech work done. Warren Merrick is an expert in this area of the mining, and he has quite a bit of information to share with you this evening that would address the concerns residents had with regards to the blowout that was there from the early 90s, and the impact that this development had with regards to the mine in that area. And I'll let him address that for the homeowners that are here from the neighborhood and for you. We left an area for the township to extend, Marvin...
Marvin Drive.
That's Marvin Drive. So that area in there, and of course, we had also explained that we would make language in the homeowner documents that state if the township requires additional land in that area, that it would be made available to them without any issue. Because that's not engineered yet, and so they're not quite sure how much property they need to create that cul-de-sac. And I think that that was primarily the issues that were raised. The mining was the main one, and we want to address that. Do you have any questions with regard to the plan itself?
With the cul-de-sac from Bourbon Drive, that's in the current open space designation. Do we, will we still have open space if that's constructed, if the cul-de-sac is constructed? Will some adequate open space?
We will.
Yes. And while we're on open space, the ponds are dry ponds, both ponds?
Yes. And they're not in the open space calculation.
In the road that dissects or goes north and south.
Barnett. Yes. That's going to be improved. So what we'll have is, at the very beginning of Barnett, where it ties to Venetia, that area will stay as is. It's very narrow, and that will be a one-way in, in that portion of it. And then, the road will be improved to township standards with, you know, the cartway, a 40-foot right-of-way, where we own on both sides of the street on Barnett.
You're saying that Barnett will be water?
Well, right now, it's literally a dirt road, a dirt path, a bicycle path. I mean, it's not a road. It's not. I don't know if you've been, if you've been on there.
We have residents that live down...
Yeah, you have residents that live at the end of Barnett. Well, they're actually right across from the cul-de-sac.
Right.
So it's a, it's a, it's a path right now. So that will be a, will be a road.
So are you saying it's going to be one-way up to the intersection?
No, no, no. Just, it'll change when it, when, so...
With the laser pointer.
Where our property begins.
That wasn't going to be served.
Yeah. Because in that way, the homeowners have a way to come back into their houses, see the neighbors, yeah. But then, that way, that neighborhood is not exiting onto Venetia Drive.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the intent of it.
It's one-way off of Venetia.
So you can come in from Venetia, but you can't go out.
As of this day, you can come in and that...
Well, there's only a couple of people. The site distance is very, you know...
More or less a driveway.
It's a driveway, but the site distance is very precarious right there, yeah.
How do we intend on signing that, so that, you know, there's no through traffic to Venetia in this thing?
There'll be adequate signs at Venetia.
I'll learn later.
Yeah. And I have to disagree, it'll be one-way from Venetia Road to this intersection.
Those three houses will have to have a one-way in only?
Yes.
So when people come to visit them, they have to go all the way around?
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Just FYI.
Yeah. I didn't know that.
I thought the dual-way would have been kind of a difficult, you know, time. If you're only going in, and then all of a sudden, you have the roadway, then you have dual traffic.
Yeah. Somebody would definitely keep on going.
Right. I agree with you.
Well, that's fine. I mean, it's really not an issue. It's for public safety, and that's the first thing. Yeah, so that's really not an issue. But of course, Churchill is the, is the road that everybody would primarily be using.
Good morning.
I'm going to let Warren Merrick speak to you with regards to the mining.
Thank you. Hope I can speak loud enough. These hearing aids make me talk lower for some reason. My wife's always yelling at me. I'm Warren Merrick. I'm a Peters Township resident, 39 years. I've got 44 years of mining experience. I retired in 2016 from CONSOL Energy. And I have a lot of geological background, a lot of hydrology, mine design. I was in Matthews just south of this in the 90s, so I know what the coal seams like. So what I did was, is I went through, and on this, on this, this plan here, you can see the outline of the coal lines as it relates to the plan. It comes along here, and it goes back up in behind the right house. And then it goes back up Churchill, right here. And the, this is on the south, south side of an anticline, so everything is sloping down to the southeast, down to this corner right here, where in, apparently in the 90s, I think it was, they had a blowout in somebody's basement, and they put in a drainage system which connects this over to the creek that runs along Churchill. I went and inspected that, and it's flowing clear. It's actually clearer than the surface discharges that actually flow by, and it seems to be pretty constant. The mine to the top of the anticline, which is like a hill underground, drains back this way, it's about 70 acres. It's not, it's not a big area. And it appears to be, there's no streams that run across there, so all the recharge into the coal mine is through precipitation. So what I did was, is I took this polygon, which is basically from the state website, GIS website, they digitized all these. I actually had to tweak it a little bit. They wanted me to look at the boreings and compare to the mine, and I actually had to move it around about 20 feet, and then every boring fell into what it showed on the mine map. Either a pillar, an entry, or, or some kind of, since it's a rotary hole, they just lost their air. So you really can't tell what's going on there. This mine was started in 1885. And actually, the mine next to it, Anderson Mine in Venetia, was started in 1879. Eventually, these two connected together in 1900. They all became part of Pittsburgh Coal Company. So the map that we have is a 1903 map that shows both mines together. This was all lined out by 1903. Probably, it was all mined out by 1880. So these, there's two entries here, and they run back across like this, traverse, and there's two entries down here, and there's two entries there. They drove these entries seven and a half foot wide. The seam was five and three-quarters inch. They used mules, it was all done by hand. And these entries were 30 foot apart. If you calculate the recovery on that, it's 37%. Anything less than 50% is considered stable. I mean, long-term stability underground. The roof may collapse and stuff, but those pillars are going to remain the same. They won't, they will not collapse, you will not get subsidence over top of those. The areas in between here, this area here, and here, calculated at 78% recovery. Anything over 50% is going to subside. I actually found the mine inspector's notes in Pennsylvania, from the 1880s and 1890s. In the one, it was interesting to talk about the Eclipse Mine. This mine had some trouble with local swamps that made drainage of the mine very troublesome. The entries, et cetera, were driven similar to the Venetia Mine. And in here, they give all the statistics about the Venetia Mine, and they matched the map really well, as far as, so the recoveries of what they got. But the fact that he said that they were sinking local swamps and they were getting water in the coal mine, it means they subsided right away. I mean, the recovery amount, you know, that's why statistically, there were so many mortality and accidents, because they were taking so much coal out there, then the people were getting covered up. So there's a swath that in most probability has been subsided for 130 years. A GAI consultants did a study for the Bureau of Mines in 1977, and they took 350 coal mines in Allegheny County, and they did all the statistics and stuff. And it actually showed that mines that mined in 1880 and 1890 were 2%...
Put that on the table.
Where, I'll send you a copy of this. 2% of the total subsidence events of those mines between 1950 and 1972. There's also the DEP AML Group out of Evansburg, which handles all closed mines, subsidence, acid mine drainage events. You report it to them, they come out, and they take a look at it and see if they want to spend state money on it. This area is part of PA 333, which is called Findleville Cemetery. And I got a copy of their efex, which shows every, there were 26, 26 complaints about mines in this area, which include Anderson Eclipse and back north of Findleville. There were no subsidence events reported in that time period. It was all acid mine drainage and water and stuff like that. And it's still going on today. You go drive by the corner of Venetia and Beavent, and you'll see water coming up out of the ground right there, and that's coming out of Anderson Mine. You go back up Churchill on the right-hand side, there's three or four spots that there's water coming out of mine, they're coming out of, you know, very similar. The nice thing about this is, is there's a system in place that has it under control. I mean, and that, that's the big thing here, is to not interfere with that system. There was talk about grouting the roadways at one time. The problem with that is, is if you grout the roadway, you will put a straight wall right across that drainage system and stop it. And all that water will back back up the hill and come out behind the right house or something like that. The way this plan is now, there's one lot here, and I think it's Lot 44. These two entries traverse here, and that's the low recovery area, which should be the highest permeability as far as, is water flow. It basically don't grout into the coal mine. There's a good chance that you're going to hit coal if you put a borehole down, because there's still pillars in place. If you hit an entry that's caved in, backfill it with 10 foot of gravel, and then grout above it. They're probably, from, from 10 or 15 foot above the coal mine entry to the surface, probably is not even subsided, because it was long-term stable at 37% recovery. So, once you get past that, those entries go up here, and there was no proposed grouting through this, this circle here and back into these areas. The proposed grouting was, was these areas here. So this is the only, there's only two entries coming there, and you do not want to interfere with them, because they basically accept all the water from the, from the field. Of course, you know, there still could be subsidence in the future. I mean, it doesn't mean it's 100%. There still could be like an entry that caves in, it could rat hole to the surface. But in 130 years, nobody's ever, ever reported a subsidence event with this. So probability statistics would say there's a high probability that subsidence is already completed, it's a stable system, and you already have a stable system for draining the water, as long as you stay away from these two entries there that you could interfere with.
But nobody's complaining about subsidence here, because this is just vacant land.
Right. But still, even the AML Group, if somebody on that property and the hole opened up, I've seen different properties that I've looked for, Ryan Holmes and for, for gas companies and stuff, who give me to look at the impact of mining on proposed pipeline right-of-ways. They will pick up on, this guy has a hole opened up in his field, and he called Evansburg, and they come out and they either say it's, it's fine, or they fill it with gravel. I mean, I've actually seen stuff where there's methane gas coming out, and people light bags and throw them on fire, and, you know, or people actually, there was one up in Oakdale, the people would drive by this hole, and they would actually go unconscious, because it was air that didn't have any oxygen in it. So they pick up, although there are no homes there, it's subsided, the AML Group would have picked up on any rat holes into the mine, any, any cones, any, anything that damaged somebody's field, they would have, they would have picked up. But still, build a home over an old coal mine, gives subsidence insurance. I mean, that's, that's a given. I mean, it's so cheap, $55 per...
What if you build a road over a coal mine? What, is there insurance available for that?
I don't know.
We were concerned about that as well, and there's a stretch of road that is most vulnerable.
Right there.
And they've agreed to grout.
And that's away from that entry and stuff? So, you know, once you get up, and in 50 foot, that seems to be the, there's no literature on it, but that seems to be what is practical, or what people have been doing around here.
50 foot?
50 foot of cover over the coal mine.
And that, that portion of road is within the 50% or 37% recovery, or the 70%?
No, that's in the 70%. So there's a good chance, it's already collapsed. But what they're doing is basically drilling down and then injecting grout, or not even injecting, they're just letting it flow, and they're kind of gluing the... they're just letting it flow. And they're kind of gluing the overburden back together. I mean, it's not filling a mine void that would keep subsidence from happening. It's just stopping further movement.
But we are gonna be changing the use of this substantially. So we're gonna be dropping trucks over the road.
Right.
Vibrations. We're gonna have people
Vibrations and
Living here building homes and all that. So the use will change.
Right.
So it's possible that dynamic loading will have an effect on areas. I'm not a geologist.
It, the, the loading on something like that dissipates after five feet, 10 feet. I mean, it does not project into, into the coal mine, no matter what. I've seen coal mines mined 20 foot apart and, and had very, very, very little interaction. The water here, here's a different, another thing. There's 70 acres in this mine that are coming down through here. And it's primarily precipitation. There's no streams. Chances are, if this rains real hard, you don't see streams running out of here because it's going down in this big sponge that's ball cracked up and coming out at one point. By putting this subdivision in here and taking all the roof drains and all the road drains and moving them to a pond that is no longer over the coal mine, it's down here, you've reduced the influence of the coal mine. So there's a good chance that the water level coming out of the coal mine will drop off because there's less surface area and less precipitation coming on that.
Since there's many mines in this
Oh, yeah.
geographic area, are you aware of any other home development that is comparable to what's being proposed here?
In Peters Township? No. Because, well, there's
Yeah, Venetia Point.
Yeah, Venetia Point that's
Venetia Point is about the same cover. And I don't know if they growed it anything.
They did, they did grow.
Huh?
With the homes off the road.
Okay.
Correct.
Right. The problem
They mined about the same time period?
Yes. Was actually, that was actually mined earlier than this by five years or something like that. Started by Dr. David Anderson. The interesting thing about that is, is this 1903 map, the, the mine map around that area is incomplete. He mined that early on and probably didn't keep track of what he mined. By 1903, when Pittsburgh Coal Company was formed and they were trying to figure out what they had, then there's just some lines across there. And I've seen the, the DEP digitize that, that area and stuff. And it doesn't look like it was mined very much, but I can guarantee you that it was mined as heavy as that. And there are just no maps. I think there's maybe 25% of the coal mines in the state don't have maps. The 1930s WPA maps, which was the CCC during the, during the Depression, Pennsylvania got all these mine engineers and geologists together and they mapped all the coal mines in, in the state. And it is a snapshot of what was going on upon 1935. It shows all of that area mined out. No coal left behind. Although the website, the GIS data from the state, because they digitized exactly what was on the map, makes it look like there's actually solid coal. If you drill down in there, you'd probably find that, no, there wasn't any coal left. It was all gone.
Could you just quickly identify again the area at 3% recovery?
Okay. It's, these two entries, you can see them right here. There's one, one. And there's barrier covers on each side. That goes up like this. That is the 37%. This area is 78% recovery. And this area is 78% recovery.
Which is a high susceptibility substance.
Actually, it would have subsided as soon as they mined it.
Sure.
Is there some sort of equipment or some sort of addendum to the owners' buildings that will get, will know that they need insurance?
There'll be a note on the recorded plan encouraging all buyers to purchase subsides shorts. And I think Ryan Holmes, Ryan?
What's up?
Tell buyers
We absolutely, yeah.
Ryan, too.
Yeah.
Hi, Ryan Clausen. So I'm with NVR Ryan Holmes. We will be the builder in the plan for Westbury. We've discussed this in depth with Warren and with, with, with Ann and Tim Murphy. And we will have a disclosure to all the residents that there has been mining. And we recommend getting subsidence insurance. And we do that now with the plan that we're doing with them in Jefferson Hills, Washington Square. And it's a very similar process.
All deeds in Pennsylvania are required to have coal notes that informs the buyers that they may not, the rights they're purchasing may not include the rights to
Lateral support.
Yes, to support, the rights to support underneath the property because there's been so much mining throughout the state. And it's been that way, I think, since the 1960s, I can't remember.
68, Act 54.
Yeah, Act 54 was, Act 54 was passed.
Yeah, we see so many of these papers in our, all of our titles. We just, it's just
Oh, yeah.
I think that there should be something very in your face, for another word, explains this particular development.
It should be, depth, depth really is not, has nothing to do with it. When you, it just determines the magnitude of subsidence. I mean, if you're at 100 feet and you think the mine collapses six feet, you're gonna see four foot of subsidence on the surface. If you're at 300 feet, you can probably see three and a half feet of subsidence on the surface. So, you're still gonna see subsidence. I think that GIA report for those thorough mines showed that at the time in 77, they didn't see any subsidence over 4 or 50 feet above the coal mine. But that was before long line were invented and
Do, do we know if the DEP requires any permits for residential construction over a known mine that is, you know, above this 50% kind of thumbnail of that it may subside further? There's no issues?
They, they do not.
It doesn't preclude them, homeowner front purchasing, mine insurance having known that, right?
No, no, correct.
They actually recommend.
They've charged.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, we will disclose that with, with the sale agreement of every home. And then we will also have something in the HOA documents as well that calls that out. So that it's very clear to the folks of what, what previous use of the property was. And I'll, I'll sit back down. Anybody have any questions about the houses before I sit back down?
In our previous discussion, I knew that we talked about grouting as part of the lots. Can you refresh my memory as to which, which lots in the, in the subdivision that was planned for? I can't remember if it was all of them or if it was part of them. I didn't think it was all of them.
No.
Yeah, we demarked them on this map that's coming up. Warren, give me a second.
Yeah, the history, I mean, this is the earliest mining in Peters Township period. The history is really, is really interesting. Yeah, they're the asterisks.
So, how many total?
I've got 14 definitely. And then one, two, three, four.
And this one is definitely gonna need to, when you get in the, in the space of the coal mine, if you hit a void, you're gonna need to backfill or grow out, grow out just to make sure you get, or backfill or grow out, just to make sure you keep the permeability through there and don't block up the coal.
And as a township, we're comfortable that that is the only stretch of road that we feel is at unacceptable risk for subsidence that require grouting?
I'm gonna say yes.
Yeah, since that was the primary ingress, egress to the majority of the lots, we felt that this was the most prudent to grow out for sure. The other stretches, they, they are out of the primary cut and involved in 50 foot line. So we didn't feel that it was necessary to grow out those areas.
Yeah, the, if you look here, based on the DEP digitized mine plan, half of that might be over solid coal. So if you put a couple of drills down, you hit solid coal, chances are you're gonna hit that all the way up to this point and then you'll hit some kind of voids. And it's really not a void. There's not a six foot opening sitting in there. It's, it's cracks that are infiltrated up through the strata that form this big, big sponge.
But this is our opportunity to abate any risk to the township, right? This is it. We're not gonna be able to recoup if something subsides in five years. There's no opportunity. There's no recourse there. This is today's the day.
Well, the
I'm asking if there's a mechanism?
Well, they, there's maintenance bonds
Sure.
That you get after the project is developed, the roads are in, and the township accepts the public improvements. We get an 18-month maintenance bond. So hopefully, nothing occurs within that. If something does occur, hopefully it occurs within that 18 months and go up to their bond. But after that, then no, it's on us if our road subsides.
Is it a one-way road here? Were, were we, are they able to dedicate that or is that too small?
Don't dedicate. It's already, ordinance, we already own and don't dedicate the rest to us.
Okay.
I think on the side plan, it shows it's being two-way. So is that
It'll be one-way.
On the side plan, it shows it one-way?
Should, it should.
Yeah, it should show it one-way.
No, it's showing two-way.
Oh, that's not through Venetia. That was through the house
Yeah, yeah.
On the plan, which Ed has mentioned he wants as, as one-way.
I thank you very much. If there's nothing else we can ask for any audience comments on this matter? Hearing none, seeing none. I do have one thought that I wanted to put out there for the commissioners or for staff. Is there a reason that we could extend the 18-month bond beyond 18 months? Is that a reasonable request? That's something that's been done before. We don't have one of these in Peters Township. I'm just trying to ensure, given the design, I respect all the, you know, technical information here. Frankly, I don't know. Most of it's 78% recovery. Just trying to seek some additional protection.
I would answer by saying our ordinance and the MPC only allows 18-month. Anything beyond that would be that they're volunteering beyond 18 months.
Is that 18 months from the beginning of construction or from the buildup?
From the time that we accept it. So it'll be in and
Up to spec.
Up to spec. It will be built. They'll be building homes there. We won't accept it right away. It'll, it'll be a year or so after it's all built before we accept it.
You talked about your plan in Jefferson. Can you tell us if you've ever had any problems there?
So in Jefferson Hills, we've put in three, a little over 300 homes
Okay.
On old coal mine.
Very similar to this?
Very similar. And in South Park, we've put in 45 or 47 homes similar to this. As a matter of fact, in South Park, it's almost identical.
Okay.
What I can explain to you about these sites and the reason Ryan Holmes comes to us to, to do them, because they have many developers that put plans together for them, is because of our knowledge of this, these types of properties. We're on site all the time. We're the, we're the actual developer. We don't subcontract out to other companies to come in to do the work. It's us doing the work. And because of that, you are always aware of what you are working with. So if there's something that becomes an unknown, you are aware of it immediately and then it's rectified. And as Warren was pointing out, a lot of times what happens when you start drilling, like in South Park for instance, the majority of the homes were above solid coal. You know, we would put in a few test holes going down in different patterns to determine whether or not the whole thing was above solid coal. So in that, in other areas, you found out that you were actually above open mining. So you adjust accordingly. And, and because we've been doing that now for the better part of 15 years, with just strictly these old coal mine sites, I can tell you that that's, we're very comfortable with this project. We're very comfortable with, with what Warren was explaining to you about the fact that this subsided 100 and some years ago. That's why you don't see problems even right now with your utilities in Barnett or with the homes that are in the surrounding area. We're very comfortable that you're not going to see problems down the road with them either. The area of that road to grout will probably, as Warren pointed out, find that the bulk of that road is probably all above solid coal. And then, you know, grouting the, the remainder of it. But you have to remember, utilities and roads are flexible. It's not like foundations of a house. And then, you know, where you, where it's much more rigid and you don't have differential settlement allowances. You know, where a road, it's, it's gravel, geotech and paving. So, you know, in, in that respect, you don't really have, have issues that. But again, you know, with Peters Township, this is not an anomaly. I mean, all of Peters Township is undermined. And the Venetia Point is in a similar situation. And I think that's been in place now for
10, 10-plus years, no, no problems.
Yeah. And that's just right down the street with the same thing. They didn't grow out under their roads at all. So you see, that's not really historically a problem.
So you're saying your Jefferson and South Park develops never had, had zero subsidence and the roads never had issues?
Never, no.
All right.
Are you drilling at each house site location?
So the, the, the other drawing that showed the asterisks is, so that
Well, the bottom
Yeah, that area is below the 50-foot of cover. So all of those lots will be drilled.
Okay.
Okay.
And then
Go ahead.
Well, so then what's the, what happens when you drill? Then what's the next step?
So
You find a void, do you drill five feet decided?
No, no, no. The geotech engineer, our, our geotech engineer has a pattern for the house plan of what the drilling pattern has to be. And it's eight to 12 holes in a certain pattern for the foundation of the house.
Oh, okay.
So what happens is like if, if we drill your first hole, if you hit solid coal, you kind of bounce over to a different spot and drill over there to see if you hit a void or solid coal.
Okay.
And then depending on what you find, you end up either just filling those couple of holes and calling it good because it's solid, or you drill the rest of the holes and then you, you, you put the grout in there. And that's all done with the geotech inspection. And then they sign off on a letter that that lot has been grouted. And then Ryan Holmes, we give that to Ryan Holmes.
So each buyer has that
It's in their file.
Or whatever.
It's in the file of the file for each house.
You make that note to them?
Correct. How close is the fracking? Is it in Union Township? Further off Venetia Road?
Well, it would be a little
West?
West of here and south in
On the other side of Venetia Road?
Correct. Past the country store.
And there's no possibility of disruption? Could that
They're not anywhere near that.
Plus they're
That sounds
How deep are these mines?
These mines are zero, they're a couple hundred feet.
I mean, they're miles
About 5,000 feet.
Yeah, 5,000 feet. Yeah, they're miles down in there.
Yeah.
All right. So in this review, are we looking at the type of homes as well and
That's part of the preliminary plan if we want to go over there, we certainly can.
Ryan, did you bring the house guys over there?
They're, we have them here. That's why I brought it up. I didn't know if we were
Ryan, can you describe?
Sure. So
Ryan.
So If you put them on the table Oh, sure. On the screen.
So these homes are, they're gonna range anywhere from like 21, 2100 square feet to about 3,300 square feet is where they're gonna fall. They're gonna be what we call Ryan Home Traditional Renaissance Home Product. It's a new product line. And we've been selling the Renaissance Homes in Pittsburgh for, for years and years. About a year and a half ago, they, they rolled this new line of Renaissance Homes out. It's been extremely well-receptive. We actually have the Columbia model, which will want to be one of the homes offered here, modeled over at Creekside, over there where the roundabouts are on 519. We opened at the beginning of January over there and we've sold, I believe we've sold 12 or 15 homes already since then. So it's a, it's, it's a great product. We will be doing the cottage elevations like you see on some of the, the We will be doing the cottage elevations like you see on some of the, the elevations that you see here. They'll all be two-car garage, front entry. They will have stone on the front, stone or brick, and then also have siding as well. These houses, instead of having the old format where people would add a morning room to it and have extensions in the back, that's what this new floor plan they rolled out. It's, they call it the lifestyle cycle that has the kitchen, the great room, and the breakfast kind of all together as one nice big room. And it's been really well, really well accepted. We're targeting the sale price of these starting around 225, oh, I'm sorry, 325. And outsales 365 is the highest. And then with options, we're going to see them probably around 350 to 390 is probably where we're, where you'll see the kind of finish out of those houses. They'll all be four-bedroom homes. They'll all have full basements with the option of folks want to finish the basements as well.
Type of development, will you permit garages in front?
Yes.
Will we limit that to other areas?
A little bit. We tried to limit it as part of our zoning update. But we don't mandate that they do side entry.
You guys couldn't do side entry?
We could not because the problem with that is then those lots, instead of being 60-foot lots, need to become 100-foot lots with a side entry, with a turntable. I mean, that's what we're seeing on a lot of our Heartland products, the higher-end lots. I mean, you're going to need, you need a lot more real estate to do that. And doing the rear entry, this model's not set up. I don't know that we even have a model. That would essentially be an integral, like a, you know, garage in the basement for the low-side lots. And we actually have eliminated all of our integral models that we build in the Pittsburgh region. Just folks don't want it. They want to be able to enter the garage on the first floor versus in the basement. So, yeah, we would have to do these as front entry. And that's what we, in all the communities around, that's what we're doing as well.
I don't think that you can do a side entry with that width of lot. I think it's not enough space. What's a setback?
20-foot on the front, seven and a half on the side. It'd be sidewalks and both sides of the street.
20 feet? So the car's going to be in the sidewalk if you park out in front?
It should be obstructed.
We're trying to keep with the character of that zoning as well down there in that area of Peters. I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to hit a price point that Peters, I mean, I'm a resident here as well. I don't think Peters has seen any product like this hit the market in Peters in probably 20 years. And I think that, I think it's needed. I think it's really going to be great for the school district, especially that area of town as well. Because, I mean, you know, Ted Taylor builds a lot of houses here and they're all big brick houses and most of the developments are that way. So I think it's going to be, it's going to be great for the township to see young families that want to live in Peters and go to the schools here because our schools are so great and they just can't afford it. And I think to have that ability, it's going to be great. We're hoping so.
Mr. Carter Phillips, did you ask about the parking? Will the parking be, maybe you asked us past the sidewalk? I mean, is there room for a car?
Yeah, there'd be rooms for the car to be in the driveway without interference.
Any other commissioner comments? Hearing none? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Westbury preliminary plan. It has details in the planning staff memo dated March 7, 2019, subject to the 22 conditions vested there.
Having a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck. That brings us to item D. Planning Commission recommendation zoning ordinance and subdivision and development permits.
I'll let the... Mr. Page? Hey, Ian? Thank you. Okay. As Planning Commission knows, back in 2013, we adopted a conference of land use plan. In 2017, August 2017, we adopted our new zoning rules. And we've been working with those for a little over a year. And as we've worked with those, we've found areas that we need to amend and correct and add to. So council has set a public hearing date for April 22, 2019 to review these proposed amendments to our zoning ordinance and our subdivision ordinance. Planning Commission's responsibility, role at this point, is to review these recommendations and make a recommendation to council. We did have a workshop on this. I forget the day. It was...
About a month ago.
About a month ago. And I know some of the planning commissioners attended. We're going to be going over some of those same items as well as we've added a few new twists and we incorporated everything that Planning Commission and Council gave us correction on that night at the workshop. So Seth's going to run through here and go through these changes to the building and subdivision.
Trying to make this as short and sweet as I possibly can. If any commissioners have questions or comments throughout, feel free to interrupt me. Anybody? Audience has commented a question?
I don't know if I'm too late.
You're approved. You're good to go.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll stick around.
We're going to start with our terms defined. This is our definition section of the zoning ordinance. And we'll get to sound ordinance at the end of this PowerPoint. First item, our cluster mailbox definition. The federal post office requires cluster mailboxes in all new developments. We're in the process of developing standards for that. But as part of that, we need to establish a definition. We're doing that now. We'll be coming back in with standards later on for cluster mailboxes. But we're simply establishing a definition. Now, most of this is taken verbatim from the United States Postal Service. It's pretty straightforward. Our buffer area definition, we've come to the realization that we want to allow for existing natural vegetative areas and wooden areas to count towards required buffer areas. It's not something that was explicit in the definition that's currently established. And we'll get into a little bit of this later on in the presentation. But here we're amending our definition to allow for those natural areas to count towards required buffer areas. The height of sign definition, as it's currently established, it's kind of convoluted because it requires us to measure it at the grade of the road in certain places, at certain heights and different locations. It's just not very straightforward. What we're doing here is simply saying that we're going to be measuring the height of a sign from the base of the sign to the height of the structure, the base of the sign at the mean finished grade at the base of the sign. It's much more straightforward than previous. That's currently established. Our lot coverage definition, it could have been construed, as it's currently established, to count driveways and parking areas as part of your lot coverage. That was never the intent. It's purely building footprint. So we're changing our lot coverage definition just to stipulate building footprint. Mini casinos. Peters Township did not decline to allow for mini casinos when they would have been required to as the Pennsylvania Gaming Board established about two years ago. So we are proposing it as a use in two of our districts. As part of that, we need to establish a definition for mini casinos. Most of this is taken from the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board, their definition of these types of facilities. We do allow for it to be amended based on different changes from the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board. Getting into our district regulations, this is kind of the meat of the zoning ordinance. Right into composite land use chart. As I said, mini casinos, we're proposing that it be a permitted use in general commercial district and a conditional use in the mixed-use activity one district. The MA1 is kind of at the south end of 19, nearby Galley Road. The general commercial is basically the rest of 19. And that's that commercial spine that runs along that portion of the township. In our medium density residential district, we're proposing to reduce the side yard setback requirement from 15 feet to seven and a half feet for both principal and accessory buildings. We felt that 15 feet is just too onerous on potential development. The seven and a half feet between structures gives us our minimum required distance between two single-family detached structures. So it's a nice sweet spot. And it's seven and a half, just like you saw in the village, Venetia Residential District. And speaking of Westbury, the Village Residential District, we are changing our minimum and maximum setbacks along Venetia Road from 30 feet minimum, from 20 feet minimum to 30 feet minimum, from 25 foot maximum to 45 foot maximum. We've done some investigation and realized that we have a number of through lots along Venetia Road and that creates some problems with those lots. We've acquired new variances. It could just be too difficult to make houses fit on those lots if they were to be redeveloped. We also wanted to help people get away from Venetia Road where it's a very busy corridor. Establishing a little bit more safety and security along Venetia Road. In addition to that, we're establishing a minimum required open space. It is not previously required to have a certain percentage of the gross jack acreage as part of the Village Residential District. So we are setting that at 25%. That's consistent across a number of districts. So we bring in 25% minimum required open space for the Village Residential District. In a number of our zoning districts, Village Residential, Mcmurray Town Center, Village Commercial, Mixed Use Activity, Village Mixed Use District, we're changing these tables, these figures, for the cross-sections of streets in regard to the right-of-ways. We're not necessarily changing them. We're bringing them in line with our subdivision and land and all-in ordinance because those are the correct figures. These were typos that were put into the tables. So we're just making sure that those two ordinance is line up with one another. For our narrow roads, we're going from a 42-foot minimum to a 40-foot minimum right-of-way. For the medium, we're going from a 51-foot minimum to a 46-foot minimum right-of-way. Wide, 60-foot minimum to 55-foot minimum right-of-way. And for the boulevards/entrance, 76-foot minimum to 62-foot minimum right-of-way. Again, in a number of districts, our Town Center, Village Commercial, General Commercial, Mixed Use Activity, Village Mixed Use, we're eliminating entirely a first-floor maximum height requirement. We've talked with some experts and architects and come to the realization that establishing a maximum height of the first floor of a structure doesn't do us much good. It kind of limits the ability for certain tenants to go in there because if you take into consideration HVAC and mechanical, it really brings down their floor, their ceiling height. And some tenants are looking for a much higher ceiling than that. So we do have a maximum building height, but, so that's not changing. We're just eliminating the maximum height of the first floor. So the buildings in themselves will stay the same maximum height, just getting rid of that first-floor height.
Mark, do you have a question?
Yeah, what is the maximum building height for that present?
It varies. What zone?
The one you just had, I'll try to...
Well, this table is from one of these districts, but we're eliminating the first floor from all of them.
Right.
So you'd have to, on this table specifically, it's 51 for a flat roof and 56 for a pitched roof. It's different if you have, it depends on the number of stories.
But it's still, it's still two-story match, right?
Not necessarily.
So you can do three stories and affect them up to 30 feet. You would still have 27 feet left to make your roof pitch work.
If you did three stories, you're limited to 34-foot and 41-foot pitched. Depends on the number of stories.
Okay.
And 4-foot maximum is a conditional use. So basically three-story is the standard. In a number of our districts, Town Center, Village Commercial, Mixed Use Activity, we're reducing the maximum, the minimum sidewalk width from eight feet to six feet. Again, we've come to the understanding that it's a little bit too onerous. Six foot still gives us plenty width to meet ADA requirements, get to lane pedestrian traffic. It's sufficient in those regards. We are putting a stipulation in there that the Planning Commission or Council can require a greater minimum sidewalk width as part of any site plan approval. So if a development comes to us and we think, we really need an increased focus on pedestrian activity here, we can bump up that minimum sidewalk width. In our Town Center, Village Commercial, Mixed Use Activity, and Village Mixed Use Districts, we are eliminating the maximum, five-foot maximum side yard setback for principal buildings. Again, we have a number of lots throughout the township that it just creates too much conflict in. And we didn't felt like, it really did us much good to warrant it having it in the ordinance. And we're also, as I mentioned earlier, going from the eight-foot to the side, six-foot minimums for the sidewalk width. It's listed in Pedestrian Design Standards as text and it's also in a number of tables. So we're just changing it in those spots.
Bump up these plans that just came on the six-foot. Is that a six-foot sidewalk or eight-foot?
Which one?
The Ryan plan.
Village Res, in the Village Residential, those were, I want to say six.
Yeah.
So they were six anyway, okay.
I thought they were five. I thought they were five.
Five, Neil.
That's what I thought, I think it's five.
Thomas says it's five. Streetscape standards within the McMurray Town Center District. As you might have seen, here along East McMurray, we have a streetscape project going on with poles. We're putting up banners and uplights. We're establishing those requirements as part of any new development in the McMurray Town Center District. They have put in one new streetscape pole for every 150-foot lot frontage. We'll get into the construction details in the next slide. That'll be an appendix item. But they will be required to do a number of poles for being a lot frontage. Staff will help them determine the most appropriate location for those poles. This establishes the number that they are required to put in. They also need to put in footers, electric conduits, uplighting, just to make it fully functional.
So let me ask you this question. So you're going to, we're going to put it in here, but it's only going to be required for new developments?
In a Town Center where we haven't put them in yet, for example, the waters?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to make them, put them in. They have agreed to put them in down...
But how about, like Starbuck's and stuff? We'd have poles there, Sid?
At this point in time, I don't know if our project is down that far, but we, the township has a goal to where it is developed in the Town Center to put the poles in.
Yeah.
This is phase one.
Try to make it consistent around like this, you know? I like it. It looks great, but you don't want to like, it'd be nice to have a consistent.
So this would be the cross-section?
I agree.
What it would be required to do. This construction detail is put together by our engineering department. It describes the footers, the poles, the lights, things that they are required to put up. This would be an appendix item at, kind of at the end of the zoning ordinance, but I didn't want to get to that and it'd be confusing. Dimensional requirements in the general commercial district. Here, we're also reducing our minimum sidewalk width from eight feet to six feet. We're also increasing our front setback requirement from a 20-foot minimum to 30-foot minimum and a 25-foot maximum to 45-foot maximum. Again, realizing the traffic level of 19, speed at which vehicles travel is a little bit of a safe environment for pedestrians and vehicles. If there's sidewalks put in front of buildings, it just makes it a better environment overall. In our mixed residential overlay district, we are proposing some housing diversity standards. So in this overlay district, depending on the number of, depending on the size of building you do, you're currently required to do a certain number of housing types. One, two, or three, 15 acres, 15 to 50 or greater than 50 acres. Problem we're in, they're in, is that we don't have a required percentage of those housing types. So theoretically, someone required to do two different housing types could come in and put one of the second and all the rest would be the first type. So it doesn't really create a mixture of housing types. So what we're doing here is proposing a 25% minimum required percentage of each housing type for developments from 15 to 50 acres where they would require two different housing types. 15% minimum required percentage in developments of greater than 50 acres that would require three different housing types. In addition to that, we are establishing a note here. This first asterisk is part of the types of houses required. That single-family detached dwellings, switchway on a lot not greater than 10,000 square feet in size, can be considered a standalone housing type. And the options that are listed in a figure in this district that simply describes single-family detached, single-family detached duplexes and multifamily. That table's not very descriptive. We've established a note here that allows for these 10,000-square-foot lots with single-family detached homes to be a separate housing types. Basically, these are patio homes. It's the most effective way for us to regulate that and allow for those as a separate housing type within the MR overlay district.
Just real quick, so on a development that is 15 to 50 acres or over 50 acres, if the developer came in and did a combination of small lot patio homes with large lot, single-family, that would count as two housing types?
Right. While they're technically, both single-family detached, the smaller lots would be a separate type.
Didn't we just do something like that? Somebody just did that.
On developments greater than 50 acres with three types of housing units... On developments greater than 50 acres with three types of housing units required, we have a second asterisk here, those developments would be required to put in multifamily housing. Because before establishing this patio home allowance, any development greater than 50 acres would, would be required to do multifamily regardless because it's part of the next figure. In order to carry that through, those developments need to put in multifamily housing to maintain that as being one of the housing type options. So it'd only be in our mixed residential overlay districts on developments greater than 50 acres in size. They would be required to do some form of multi-housing, multifamily housing.
That's condos.
Conservation Residential Overlay District. Here, we're kind of tying back into those right-of-way charts that we saw earlier. This one hasn't described separately in its own chart in a range of numbers. We're simply aligning those to match those previous charts. We're also increasing the front setback requirement in the Conservation Residential Overlay District from 15 feet to 20 feet, and then completely removing the 15-foot side yard setback requirement for corner lots. Corner lots already have enough of a burden placed upon them because they have double frontage. So they have increased setbacks on two streets. Adding in a 15-foot corner lot on top of that really limits the buildability of a lot, so we're moving that 15-foot corner to be seven and a half, 10, or seven and a half, depending on the housing type.
Just wanted to say one thing. Yeah, I know for the members up there, you probably kind of look at some of them and think you're giving them a lot, but this is...
Hey, Mark, can you stop that?
Sure. Sorry about that. Now, I said, I know for the members up here, you kind of maybe look at and goes, it lightening up too much, but I think is what really, and I've developed all over the country, is what they're really doing is bringing this more in line with where it is many other places. But from a developer's point of view, this is still pretty restrictive. It makes sense. And some of the things that were originally proposed, you really just had pieces of property that were never just going to be usable because you couldn't get them to fit, but then what these guidelines were. So now I think you can develop some less desirable areas without doing as much earth disturbance, which has always been a big problem with, with some of the codes in Peters. And so you go in, if you had a little less restrict or a little less setbacks, you know, you could move 50,000 yards of dirt instead of 250,000 yards of dirt. And properties that start to look like cliffs wouldn't have looked like cliffs. So I, I think I was, kind of what I'm just saying is, you know, I do a lot of developing, and this is still very restrictive, but I think it's real good common sense, and it's in line with what I see in a lot of the developments and other areas.
Could you just take Nick and Mark?
Oh, Mark Hoskins. With Benjamin Marcus Homes. And I've been building in Peters since, getting old, 86, 87. Anyhow, thank you. Just wanted to say that, you know, I thought I was doing a real good job of it.
In the mixed residential overlay district, it's similar to the last chart. The only difference being we're not doing any changes to the front setback. So again, making these right-of-way widths in line with previous charts and removing the corner lot 15-foot setback requirement. Through our general regulations, accessory structures, we're basically fixing a typo here, saying that a zoning permit, not a building permit, shall be required for this criteria. So nobody needs to get a building permit for these things, but they do need to get a zoning permit. It's the way we facilitate things, just fixing a typo here. In our driveway dimensions figure, it's, we're also fixing typos. There were a number of these that said less than and should be greater than. It's a pretty straightforward fix. Landscaping for interior parking lots. The next three slides are all brand-new language. I didn't put them in bold because it was hard to read, but they're all brand-new. We're establishing some standards for landscaping inside of a parking lot. It talks about trees, the number of plantings you need to put in, landscape islands, different combinations there within, some different requirements from the township, some buffer areas that, some stipulations in there. Landscaping for service structures, locations of screening, protection for the screening materials, and then some other language here about interior parking lot landscape. Back to buffering and screening, like I mentioned in the definition of buffer area, simply establishing language here that would allow for actually wooded or vegetated areas to count towards buffers that are required as part of a figure elsewhere in the zoning ordinance that describes the different types of buffer areas. But we are putting a stipulation in there that the township can require additional plantings to supplement the natural area if it's just not up to snuff, if it doesn't have substantial enough buffering to it, we can require additional planting materials. Minimum parking by use, we're going from one to 50 per square foot for restaurants slash fast food to one to 75. We looked at some of our existing fast food restaurants and realized that at one to 50, it required far too much parking than is necessary. The one to 75 brings us more in line with national, national standards.
Is Seth good?
Yeah.
At our, at our workshop, there was a lot of talk in this section about the placement of trees versus shrubbery.
Yes.
Near the front of stores. And did we expressly state that anywhere? How were we, how was it addressed in the language?
So this is only...
Yeah, I didn't see it really...
This landscaping only deals with double row of parking. So you will never have double row of parking right in front of a building.
Right.
So with the single row of parking, we don't require any type of landscaping between, and with along that, nor do we require the trees. So you would never have that right in front of the building, which is that of space plus an aisle plus another space, didn't, if they had.
So the island that breaks up the parking would not have a tree in it? With its single lane, even if it's in the front?
Correct. Stacking and queuing spaces. We simply wanted to add in language here, it's italics, per lane, stating that any of these queuing spaces required for these different uses are established per lane. It wasn't clear before that if you had more than one drive-through lane that you had to acquire, have the number of minimum parking spaces in those lanes. It just helps for good site circulation. Signs of public displays. We are increasing the maximum sign area for in the general commercial district and reducing it in the mixed-use activity center and the Village Mixed Use Districts. These figures that we're going towards are from the old zoning ordinance that should have been brought over to when it was adopted in 2017. Again, it's just kind of fixing typos and correct figures. Billboards, clarifying some language here, simply saying that you can't have a billboard within 750 feet of another billboard. As established, it has any off from the sign, which theoretically could be any freestanding sign, which obviously creates some conflict, so we're just clearing it up that billboards have to be so far from other billboards. And establishing the township engineer as the floodplain administrator instead of the township zoning officer. You can't do that from, we looked into it from FEMA, and it's sort of exciting. Into our subdivision and land development ordinance amendments. Into our lots, blocks, and parcels section, it talks about public and private streets. What we're saying here is that all lots or parcels shall have direct access to a public or private street as provided in section 38537, which will be in the next slide. Basically, the intent here is to limit the incentive for potential developers to put in a private street that doesn't meet township standards, and then we deal issues with that later on because sometimes they come back to us asking for us to accept it, and it creates some problems. So this would require that any private street be built to township standards, whether or not it's public or private. So if we were to go in and accept it at some point in the future, it's at least built to township standards. So we establish that from the get-go. And that's what this says. The location width of all streets, both public and private, shall conform to all of our design standards that are described in 38337. Our construction details, Gateway has been working with our township engineer to update a lot of these. The ones that are struck and out there have been removed and then replaced with these. They weren't all replaced in time. We reduced it a little bit. I'm not going to go into details of each of these construction details. They're in your packets if you want to look at them. It's just kind of a lot of information. I really can't add much to, but it's good stuff. A lot of it has just been modernized and updated. That's all that comes.
So, Planning Commission, we're asking, what will be these proposed amendments towards zoning and subdivision ordinance, and you make a recommendation to council to adopt these?
The, the only question I had from our workshop was, the mini casino, was that to be permitted in all general commercial from my recollection?
All general commercial and a conditional use in the mixed-use activity.
I seem to recollect it's conditional, might be.
P in GC, C in the M, mixed use. That was the census at the workshop.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that Planning Commission recommend that these ordinance be adopted by council.
I'll second.
All in favor? Anything else, planning force miscellaneous issues?
I have nothing.
Thank you so much. You're done.